Well, good evening and welcome to the first in this series of four Town Hall meetings that I'm doing this winter here in LaGrange. For those of you who are joining us on Facebook Live, I also would like to thank you for logging in and following along with this Town Hall event. I'm here at Hollis Hand Elementary School on Country Club Road here in LaGrange and very excited to be doing this once again. This is the third year that I have done this series of Town Hall meetings around LaGrange. We will be here tonight. We will be at the Troop Baptist Association Building this coming Thursday, February 2nd. We will then be at Confidence Missionary Baptist Church on Cawquatch Street next Tuesday, February 7th, and then on February 9th, we'll be at Dunson United Methodist Church. These are the same four locations that we have been the last three years, and these locations have been selected because it enables me and the staff and members of the City Council to get out into the city, to go out into, if you will, the four corners of the city, into the neighborhoods, to hear about things that are on the minds of our local residents and give me an opportunity as Mayor to share some things that are going on in our city. Tonight, we're in the northwest section of town, which is why we selected this particular location at Hollis Hand. Appreciate all of you taking the time to come out. I would like to just make a few quick introductions of some people who are here in the audience. I've seen three members of the LaGrange City Council who are with us tonight, and so I'd like to recognize and ask them to stand. We have Councilman Nick Woodson, Councilman Tom Gore, and Councilman Mark Mitchell. So would you please thank them for coming out this evening? All three of these gentlemen represent District 1 in the city of LaGrange, which we are in District 1 here at Hollis Hand. District 1 is essentially the north half of the city, and appreciate all three of them being here. I'm also delighted that we have our City Manager, Meg Kelsey. She's back in the back. Thank you, Meg, and appreciate all the members of your staff as well who have come out this evening. I hope that everyone had an opportunity... Oh, and I also want to recognize the Chairman of our County Board of Commissioners, Chairman Patrick Cruz. Haven't seen any other elected officials slip in on me tonight. But I hope as you came in this evening, you had an opportunity to pick up the 2017 update, which is a document that we've prepared that goes through a lot of things that are happening in LaGrange, a lot of economic development projects, recreation projects, public safety-related projects. And in the past, for those of you who are veterans of these Town Hall meetings, I would spend the first 30 or 45 minutes kind of going through a summary of all the things that are going on around town. And decided this year that in the interest of time, we would prepare the update, which has some of the relevant data about some of the things happening. You can take that with you and study it and may prompt other questions that you may want to present to me or to someone else on the council or staff. But it will enable us to dispense with some of that laundry list tonight and let us get more time for your questions and your suggestions. I did mention we are doing this on Facebook Live tonight, and that's a little bit of a change. We have not tried that in the past. Hope it works well. What that will enable us to do is to not only allow people on Facebook to follow along with the questions that are in discussion tonight, it will also allow people who are watching us on Facebook to ask questions. And so we do have staff monitoring the Facebook page, and so they will be able to get my attention if someone actually posts a question on Facebook. So this is kind of exciting. That's the reason we have so many cameras and lights, and it's a little bit different this year, a little bit different from me. So again, thank you for coming out. I think it's an exciting time to be in LaGrange. I'm very excited about all of the things that are happening around our city. I think if you... As you read in the update, there are a lot of good projects underway, a lot of good new initiatives, and certainly we're excited about that. But we also know that we, as Mayor and City Council members, are public servants. We represent you, and so it's important for us to make ourselves available as often as we can to hear from you about things that are on your mind, questions that you have and suggestions that you have for the city. So I'm going to stop there and open it up and ask you, what's on your mind, LaGrange? What's on your mind tonight? What suggestions do you have for me and the City Council members? What questions do you have? What can I respond to? It doesn't always have to be first. It can be a comment. Doesn't have to be a question. It can be a comment or suggestion. Chairman Cruz.
Mayor, if I could have the privilege of asking you the first question tonight. I know that we get a lot of comments about workforce development in LaGrange and what are we doing with a lot of these new industries and retail jobs that's headed this way, so I thought you might want to comment on today, this morning's meeting and some things that's going on in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the benefit of our Facebook viewers, I'm going to repeat questions and summarize questions and comments that are asked. But Chairman Patrick Cruz asked about workforce development and what we as a city and county are doing to try and address the workforce needs of our community. And so I appreciate that question. The city has actually been very successful in the last few years, as has the county, in recruiting new jobs to our community. Just in 2016, we announced projects that will result in... Oh, oh. In approximately 2,500 jobs. And we know that we have to fill those jobs. We have to have skilled, qualified workers to fill those jobs. And so as a joint project of the Chamber of Commerce and the Troup County Center for Strategic Planning, we have engaged a firm called Avalanche Consulting out of Texas to come to town and to study our workforce needs, to study not only the jobs that are there now, also the jobs that we have recruited that we anticipate coming over the next few years, and then to match that up with our current workforce, with our current demographic, with our current educational system and programs, to try and see if there are places where we have gaps. And if there are places where we have gaps, how we can identify those and then fill those gaps. And so I'd certainly like to commend the leadership of Paige Estes at the Chamber of Commerce, who has taken this initiative on and is leading the discussion. But yesterday and today, the city leaders, county leaders, industrial leaders, small business members of the chamber, realtors, I mean, you go... You pick any identifiable category of people, educators, people who intersect this question in some way, have been going to the chamber, cycling through the chamber through a series of focus groups to try and help identify these issues. And Avalanche has a great record of success in other communities, and that's why they were vetted by the chamber and selected by the chamber to do this project. And I'm very excited about it. Look forward to their report coming down. You can participate in this process by going to a website called troupeworks.net. And I'm sure it's linked on the chamber's page also if you need to get there. But there's a questionnaire to fill out. So as citizens, employers, residents of LaGrange, it's a way for us to invite your feedback. Where are the gaps? Where are the things that we need to be focusing on as we build that 21st century workforce to make sure that these jobs we're recruiting go to local residents and help to build our local economy? So that's very important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions or comments? John?
Mayor, what is the timing on the Bull Street realignment?
Thank you. The question is about the Bull Street realignment. And for those of you who don't... There may be something about it in the update, but for those of you who don't know, the City Council identified a couple of years ago the intersection at Bull Street and Main Street and Byron Hurst as not being a particularly well-designed intersection in town, on the south side of town. It's where the old Chamber of Commerce office used to be back in the day, right there by the old fire station. And it's not a great... It's not a well-designed intersection, and our first thought was, well, maybe we want to do some kind of roundabout or some kind of new traffic control process there. And the reason that becomes critical is because there's so much development happening on the south side of downtown. For the first time, we're finally getting a lot of new growth in that south side area. We've had the District 4 Public Health Office open at the side of the old fire station. The Wild Leap Brewery is set to open this summer in the old Westbrook Tire Building. The Callaway Foundation, which owns the property behind Westbrook, going back down... Going back down, is that Peters?
Pierce.
Pierce, Pierce, Pierce Street. Going down Pierce Street, they want to redevelop that property. And so what the engineers have come up with is the idea of realigning Bull Street to basically line up with Pierce Street, loop around the Westbrook building, and then come back into Main Street, just this side of the railroad track, right there, kind of where Frank Tigner Drive comes in. And so that project has been approved. It's going to be funded in large part by DOT LMIG money, and so I'm very excited about that. I would think we're probably looking... I'm looking back to the City Manager, but I'm thinking we're probably looking at trying to get that out to bid later this year.
Probably in the next month.
Okay, so yeah, in the next... Sooner than... I mean, I knew it had been approved, but I wasn't sure how quickly we'd get it out to bid. But yeah, probably in the next couple of months, we'll get it out to bid. Normally, that bid process takes about two months to get bids in, review them, select the lowest bidder, et cetera, and then we'll give the go-ahead. Do we have a estimated time to completion on that project?
No, sir. They would like to have it done when the brewery opens, so we are trying to be aggressive in our schedule, you know, to coordinate late summer.
Yeah, the brewery is scheduled to be open in the July timeframe. That may be a bit aggressive for them even, but they want to be open this summer, and we would like to have that realignment done about the same time. Fortunately, there's not a lot of new construction has to take place because a lot of those roads are already platted and in place. The biggest issue will be getting Bull Street shifted right to line up with Pierce. And so I hope you'll start to see that in the next, you know, in the next couple of months, getting underway. Other questions or comments? Matt?
I understand that there's supposed to be a fire station on the northwest side. Do we have any idea where that's going to be?
The question was about plans for a new fire station on the northwest side of town, near where we are presently located. We have discussed that. It has not yet been approved by the City Council, but I anticipate it will be an item in the 2017-2018 budget. So I think it'll probably be in the budget discussions that start in May and then the budget that takes effect in July. There's definitely a need for another fire station in the northwest side of town. One of the great things about LaGrange is that we have an ISO 2 rating for our fire department, which is among the top 5% or so fire departments in the country. And because we have that ISO 2 rating, it saves you a lot of money on your homeowner's insurance, and it benefits our industrial customers and commercial customers because they have such high response times or low response times to fires and a high rating. So that's a great thing. We've identified that there are areas here in the northwest side of town where it simply takes us longer to get there than we would like, and so that's the reason why we feel like we need a new station in this area. It will also help the county because the county also has some residences out beyond, like Cameron Mill Road, the River Club area, some of that area, that we can respond to on a mutual aid basis, even though it's outside the city limits. The current thinking is the best location for that fire station would be on the site of the current city waterworks, which is right there, just past Foxcroft on Cameron Mill Road, right there in the waterworks, simply because we already own that land. And so we wouldn't have to go out and buy land in addition to building a new fire station and the new equipment and staffing that goes along with that. And I think that is the recommendation that's come to us from the fire department. I think the fire department has looked at other alternatives, but that seems to be the consensus location. Chief, do you have anything to add to that? Chief Decker?
No, sir. Just, we're waiting council to give us their guidance on, you know, whether the funding will come from budget or it'll be a SPOSS issue, but we should know something, I would expect, by May or June.
Thank you. And our Public Safety Chief, Chief Decker, is here, and appreciate that, Chief. Appreciate you being here. And so that's... They're just waiting to see about the funding decision and where the best location would be. I've had discussion with the county. County Chairman is here also, and they very much like that idea because it would enable us to have response times to, I guess, Whittaker Acres and River Club and some of those areas out even further that currently have longer response times. We could get there faster from, potentially, from the waterworks facility. Yes, we've got a Facebook question, okay?
Judy Freeman from Facebook said, "I'm on a trip out of state watching Facebook Live. What is the timing of the roundabout at Broad, Panther Drive, and Country Club?"
Okay. And the question from Judy Freeman, who is not in LaGrange but watching us on Facebook Live, thank you, Judy, thank you, is about the roundabout at Broad and Country Club. It's underway. That particular process, we have already started relocating utilities and removing the landscaping there that's going to be kind of in the way of the new road, and we anticipate that probably getting going March-April timeframe. Is that still the plan? And it's about a 60-day project because, much like the Bull Street realignment, we already own the right-of-way. Most of the road is already there. We just simply have to reconfigure it. Now, let me say to all of you who, just like me, I go through that intersection every day, at least twice, because where I live on Ridgecrest going downtown, I have to go through there every day. There's going to be a little bit of pain associated with the construction for that 60 days because we're going to have to do it in segments. We're going to have to do it in segments around the intersection. But I think that it will be a vast improvement for anybody who's ever tried to make a left turn out of Country Club on to Broad at the wrong time of day. It can become a safety, a public safety hazard. My chief, and this is not a confession, so don't write me up a ticket for this, but my rule is that you know an intersection is not working well when everybody disregards the traffic control device and nobody stops at the stop sign there in the mornings when they're making that left turn on to Broad. If they see there's a green... If they see there's an opportunity to go, they just go. And that's a terrible, that's a terrible public safety issue and something that I think we definitely need to address. So I think it'll probably be about a 60-day project. It'll happen this spring, and I think after it's done, it will be a much improved traffic flow for that intersection. At least that's what I hope we'll see, and I think that's what the engineers are telling us. Roundabouts work well. They're new to LaGrange, but they are popping up all over Georgia because the DOT recognizes that the roundabout is a traffic control device that allows traffic to continuously flow with very high public safety. So not only does it allow traffic to move, but because you're always making right turns, never making left turns, it's a much safer design for an intersection. Kendall?
Yes, Mayor, and thank you so much and to the council and to the commissioners as well. I just want to thank you all for your leadership and all of the workforce development that's already been done and the involvement, support through the school system as well for Think Academy. I think that we've had tremendous opportunities over the last year. We're going to continue to see that with the excellent recruitment of industry in our area. And I know that our community and the City Councilmen and Commissioners that you fully support, the Think Academy with the workforce development, making sure that we can supply employees to our manufacturing facilities. And in order to be able to continue to keep up with all of the construction, the manufacturing that's going on, we have a new hotel that's coming, a lot of other things that are coming downtown, we're really seeing in the housing industry a huge shortage of subcontractors. And I think that this is an issue that is causing impediment on us getting more housing that we need locally. And has the City Council, the Commissioners, or the Strategic Planning Committee for all the groups, has there been any discussion and possibly partnering with the school system? And so for those students that aren't college-bound, of offering them some hands-on workforce development for not only electricians and plumbers that they can get through the technical school, but what about framers that we really need as well? And maybe to help some of those people start their own, you know, not the city help them start their own business, but help them in getting training that they'll need to be able to help supply those subcontractors that we need in our market right now.
Thank you for that. And the question relates to the need for more subcontractors, tradespeople, particularly in some of the house-building trades, and people qualified for those jobs because there seems to be, with the growth in the community, there seems to be a recognized shortage of people who are capable of building the house. Because when you build a house, it's not just a general contractor. A house probably employs 20 or more subcontractors, each doing, you know, one particular part of that. And how can we address that workforce need? And it relates back to Chairman Cruz's earlier question about workforce because definitely this is an issue that we recognize is a concern. Sometimes, and I thank you for the comment and the question, sometimes when we think workforce, we tend to think Kia, Century Tire, Interface, Caterpillar. We tend to think the manufacturing, and we tend to think, well, we need to be through Think Academy and through the school system and otherwise, we need to be providing our children with the skills they need to get jobs in industry. And we do need to be doing that. But we don't need to forget about all the other jobs and professions that are out there. As you say, the electricians, the plumbers, the carpenters, et cetera. And certainly, even at the city of LaGrange, we have an ongoing need for electricians and plumbers in the water department and some of those trades. So I think it's a great point. I think the way to address that is for me to communicate that to the school system and to the College and Career Academy in particular. I know those are all items that are identified in the career pathways that the school system already has in place, and maybe it's something that we as a community just need to do a better job of telling that story to the kids who, for whatever reason, don't want to go to college or post-secondary education and so forth, that there are these other job opportunities out there and that maybe through high school, Think Academy, or maybe through West Georgia Tech, they could learn those trades. So we'll definitely follow up on that because I was... I'm aware generally of this being an issue, but I appreciate you boiling it down to that in, particularly in the housing trade, this is important because one of the things we definitely need is more housing in our community. I mean, if we're going to be bringing new jobs to our community, there are going to be people relocating here, and we're excited about that because we know that we need more rooftops. If we're ever going to attract the kind of retail and restaurants that a lot of our residents want, we have to grow the community. There's no other... There's absolutely nothing else you can do to attract retail and restaurants. You can bribe them, and they won't come to your community if you don't have the rooftops to support it. They know good and well what it takes to make their businesses succeed. And so we know we need that, and we know that we need the new construction in particular. So, yes?
To add to that is with the West Georgia Tech, where you can get your plumbing and your electrical, is there's not a good training facility for framers, for brick masons? And I don't think we even have a local brick mason in Troup County anymore. I think that we've had tremendous opportunities over the last year. We're going to continue to see that with the excellent recruitment of industry in our area. And I know that our community and the city councilmen and commissioners that you fully support, the Think Academy with the workforce development, making sure that we can supply employees to our manufacturing facilities. And in order to be able to continue to keep up with all of the construction, the manufacturing that's going on, we have a new hotel that's coming, a lot of other things that are coming downtown, we're really seeing in the housing industry a huge shortage of subcontractors. And I think that this is an issue that is causing impediment on us getting more housing that we need locally. And has the city council, the commissioners, or the strategic planning committee for all the groups, has there been any discussion and possibly partnering with the school system? And so, for those students that aren't college-bound, of offering them some hands-on workforce development for, not only electricians and plumbers that they can get through the technical school, but what about framers that we really need as well? And maybe to help some of those people start their own, you know, not the city help them start their own business, but help them in getting training that they'll need to be able to help supply those subcontractors that we need in our market right now.
Thank you for that. And the question relates to the need for more subcontractors, tradespeople, particularly in some of the house-building trades, and people qualified for those jobs. Because there seems to be, with the growth in the community, there seems to be a recognized shortage of people who are capable of building the house. Because when you build a house, it's not just a general contractor. A house probably employs 20 or more subcontractors, each doing, you know, one particular part of that. And how can we address that workforce need? And it relates back to Chairman Cruz's earlier question about workforce. Because definitely, this is an issue that we recognize is a concern. Sometimes, and I thank you for the comment and the question, sometimes when we think workforce, we tend to think Kia, Century Tire, Interface, Caterpillar. We tend to think the manufacturing, and we tend to think, well, we need to be through Think Academy and through the school system and otherwise, we need to be providing our children with the skills they need to get jobs in industry. And we do need to be doing that. But we don't need to forget about all the other jobs and professions that are out there. As you say, the electricians, the plumbers, the carpenters, et cetera. And certainly, even at the city of LaGrange, we have an ongoing need for electricians and plumbers in the water department and some of those trades. So, I think it's a great point. I think the way to address that is for me to communicate that to the school system and to the College and Career Academy in particular. I know those are all items that are identified in the career pathways that the school system already has in place. And maybe it's something that we, as a community, just need to do a better job of telling that story to the kids who, for whatever reason, don't want to go to college or post-secondary education and so forth, that there are these other job opportunities out there and that maybe through high school, Think Academy, or maybe through West Georgia Tech, they could learn those trades. So, I mean, we'll definitely follow up on that. Because I was, I'm aware generally of this being an issue, but I appreciate you boiling it down to that, and particularly in the housing trade, this is important. Because one of the things we definitely need is more housing in our community. I mean, if we're going to be bringing new jobs to our community, there are going to be people relocating here, and we're excited about that because we know that we need more rooftops. If we're ever going to attract the kind of retail and restaurants that a lot of our residents want, we have to grow the community. There's no other, there's absolutely nothing else you can do to attract retail and restaurants. You can bribe them, and they won't come to your community if you don't have the rooftops to support it. They know good and well what it takes to make their businesses succeed. And so, we know we need that, and we know that we need the new construction in particular. So, yes?
Just to add to that is with the West Georgia Tech, where you can get your plumbing and your electrical, is there's not a good training facility for framers, for brickmasons? And I don't think we even have a local brickmason in Troup County anymore. I know that people are going outside the county, and there's a lot of electricians in your air, AC, heating and air that they're bringing in from outside the community as well. So...
That's good information, and that's good to know. And we will definitely make sure that gets on the list. I'm looking over here towards Paige, who's working with the Avalanche Group on the consulting side. Do we have a Facebook question?
Yeah.
Let me get my Facebook question, then I'll come back over.
Speaking of new businesses, Linda Mazel Dahlman wanted to know what new businesses will definitely be coming as a result of the Great Wolf Lodge?
Well, Great Wolf, Great Wolf will definitely be coming. And I don't know, and I don't have any specific answer to that question. The question was what new businesses will be coming as a result of Great Wolf? Great Wolf is seen as an anchor tenant, if you will, for the Exit 13 development that the C-Lig group is developing. And what I mean by an anchor tenant is they will be bringing 400,000 to 500,000 visitors per year to that location. And so, if you don't have, if you don't have the rooftops you need to attract some types of retail and restaurant businesses, then one way to, if you will artificially inflate the population, is to have transient population. You might look at, any resort area does this. You look at a community like Gulf Shores, Alabama, they have a lot more restaurants and retail than they should based on their population of actual residents. But it's because every weekend, they fill up with huge numbers of visitors and travelers who then turn around and go back to Atlanta or Birmingham, et cetera. We are trying to do something similar, which is to attract people to our community from Atlanta, from Columbus, from Montgomery, whose families will come and spend the weekend at Great Wolf. And hopefully, they won't just stay at Great Wolf for three days in a row, but they'll want to venture out to restaurants and shopping, other tourist attractions, come downtown, et cetera. And so, they become an anchor tenant for a development. The C-Lig group, which owns the adjoining couple of hundred acres, is very experienced at doing shopping center developments. And they are very much, they are very much leading the discussion and the recruitment of new tenants to that area. They will ultimately build spaces and lease those spaces. But it's a timing issue. Great Wolf won't be open until May-June of 2018, so the people aren't here yet. So, therefore, a lot of those leases are not being signed. Therefore, I don't have any particular names that I can give of anything in specific that's coming there. But given the amount of people that will be pouring in there, C-Lig, which is the owner, as I say, they are very confident that they're going to be able to attract significant retail and shopping to that area. I hope they're right. That's certainly a private enterprise development by C-Lig, and I certainly hope they will. I am excited about some of the other things that are happening in other places around town, where we've had recent announcements at the mall, we've had recent announcements on Commerce Avenue, we've had other developments going on, not just concentrated at Exit 13. But I do think that Great Wolf can be a game changer for us, particularly on the south side of town, which has been underdeveloped historically. Question?
As far as rooftops and getting people under those rooftops, I kind of think one of the next bigger issues then would be the school system. Is there a commitment to keeping schools or is it going to the larger, like the Franklin Forest, all under one roof? What's going on with that? Because the ratings still overall are not great in Georgia, which overall doesn't have a great rating, which I think doesn't help the community on paper.
Yeah. And the question's about the school system and about particularly as we grow, how the school system model may change or not change in terms of elementary schools and zoning and so forth. The short answer to that question is I don't know because, as mayor, I have absolutely no responsibility over the school system. I can't influence, I mean, I have no direct influence over those decisions, et cetera. And so, I think that is a question that unfortunately, we'd have to put to our school board members and superintendent. But I don't, the longer answer to the question is that, as a community, even though we don't have, even though I don't have as mayor and Chairman Cruz, as chairman of county commission, doesn't have, even though we don't have a direct role, we know that education is the most significant issue that we face, and it's something that we all want to support and improve and find ways to embrace. So, with that in mind, the Troup County Center for Strategic Planning, of which Chairman Cruz, myself, the other mayors, Paige Estes from the chamber, and all the institutional leaders the community sit on, we have made workforce and education our two priorities for the year. Dr. Pugh sits on that board with us. And so, once a month, we have this very discussion that we're growing, we're attracting jobs, we're hoping to bring new housing developments. What can we, as a community, do to come together and rally around the school system and support the school system and help the school system think through those kind of issues like big school, small school, you know, what early childhood education versus technical high school education, you know? We're trying to think through those. And I will tell you that I think it has been a very good and healthy process to have those discussions on a monthly basis to try and see if there are ways we can plug in. I'll give you an example. Two years ago, chief, we were, I was at this, maybe it was a year and a half ago, I was at the strategic planning meeting, and basically was talking with Cole Pugh about how can I, as mayor, because I don't have any, I don't fund the school system directly, I don't have any oversight responsibility, how can I, as mayor and the city council, support you? And the comment was made, "Well, I could use another school resource officer." But I didn't have, he didn't have the money to fund that. And so, we went to the council, and we approved another school resource officer for the school system so that we could put, in this case, Garden Room and Middle School, we could put an officer in the school, and the city partially funds that. And so, you know, there are great opportunities in those conversations to find ways, that's just one minor example, but to find ways to help the school system. Because we know it's, we know it's the most important thing that we have as a community to work on, is to make sure that we do have a good first-class quality education system, public education system. And so, we'll continue to be working on that. But I don't know the specific answer to your question about the model of big school, small schools. You know, I personally like the smaller schools. I think that, I think smaller classes are better, smaller schools are better, you know? But I also understand that I'm not having to, I'm not having to go through the budget of the school system and figure out how to fund it without raising your property taxes and my property taxes. And so, it's a challenge that they continue to struggle with. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I work for the school system as parent mentor in the special education department. So, I'm here representing a group of people who don't usually have a voice, our students with special needs in our school system. We have about over 1,000 kids being served in special education, and we always have to do data to find out how many of those graduates go on to do post-secondary education or jobs or... It typically runs between 28% and 35% of our students wind up going home and sitting with no opportunities. With the growth that's happening and the industry that's happening, we feel like we're not tapping into a population of people who would be wonderful employees. I know some parents are here and some other school system people are here. We, as a department and as parents, would love the opportunity to sit down with you and talk about the barriers that our students face. I have a 17-year-old with a moderate disability. Doesn't mean he can't go to work. And we would love to talk to you of brainstorm ideas on the barriers that we face. So, if that's an opportunity...
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. And I fully embrace what you're saying, which is to, particularly for our special needs students in Troup County, to find opportunities for them to find jobs and to connect, to connect sort of the dots with the parents and the students that you're describing with some of our industrial prospects and some of our other employers in town. And so, what I would like to do is to make sure that Paige, in particular, connects with you. Paige Estes, who is president of the Chamber of Commerce, because Paige is leading this workforce discussion for our community. And I don't know, and I'm just, Paige, you may want to respond to this, I don't know that Avalanche, in the consulting discussion, has plugged into the special needs question. But I hope they will, and I think we, I think we need to plug that in and make sure that's a part of the conversation.
Any parents that are here or school system folks, if you do go to troupworks.net and start completing the survey, there are two places that it says other factors. There's plenty of room. If you will write some of the issues and concerns that you all have and opportunities you would like to see created, that'll help us get it a part of our study, and we can follow up with you. There's a place for contact information, so give us that information, we'll make it a part of the study, and hopefully, we can set up another focus group to sit down and talk with you all about what those challenges are and what the opportunities are.
And it's troupworks.net, so that would be the place to record it and to make sure that that gets on the radar. And is there, is there a, for your organization, is there a, is there a board? Is there an officer?
I'm with the school system, so...
Okay.
But I've been in this position for 13 years, and for 13, some of our students can stay in school till they're 22-years-old, and they're working hard to get through school and go home and sit down. It's just, it's just not appropriate or...
Yeah.
We work closely with our Juror certification rehabilitation office here that's on Hogansville Road, and we have some great things happening in the schools. We have our kids go out into the community and do job skills through some local businesses. But it's just not translating into jobs or careers after they leave school.
And it sounds like, it sounds like not only do we need to enhance the connections between those students and some of the employers, we also probably need to do some education of the employers. I know that, obviously, New Ventures, and there are some organizations in town that do some work in the same space, but I think certainly we need to expand that to more of the standard industries and employers in town. And so, we will definitely, we'll definitely follow up on that. So, you can be contacted through the school system, obviously. I didn't know if there was, is there a parent organization too, or is it just not so much?
Not really. Not officially. I mean, we have a parent email group, you know?
Well, we can make that, we can make those contacts. Thank you. Okay. Are you going to volunteer to chair it?
I'll be on it.
Let me go back to the far back. Yeah, yes, ma'am.
What's your input on how to better educate the community about those with special needs or those with disabilities who would use, say, a service dog? Would include employers or just in general?
Yeah.
Because you said earlier about a topic of how my daughter, she requires a service dog to go out, and her pediatrician has made it clear to her, she is not to leave our home without her service dog when we go out. But there's times she doesn't like to take her service dog with her because of how she's treated. And there's been times where we've had to actively call the police or the sheriff to handle a matter for us, and they don't even know the laws, and then they can't educate the people we have the issue with because they themselves don't even know the laws, both state and federal laws in regards to it. And then they become no help, and it becomes more stressful, and we just, her and I both have to go home and just lock ourselves away to de-stress.
Thank you. And you and I did have a brief conversation before the town hall tonight about that. But the question's about service dogs and educating the community about the laws and the protocols in dealing with service dogs. And I think that that is something that, it's hard in 2017 to find one way to get the word out and to educate people. It requires more of a scattershot approach. But certainly, certainly the city can help in some ways. We can certainly make sure that all of our officers, our police officers are educated about it, chief and Meg. There may be other ways that we can find to get the word out about that. Certainly, the press is here. I know we have several members of the press, and so, they might very well be willing to talk with you directly and write a story about your particular experience and how the service dogs have become an issue. It is very clear under federal law, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, that you have to allow individuals to use service dogs. It's very clear, very, I think, and you can't, you can't demand proof of disability, you can't demand proof of training, there's no card you have to carry. I mean, if you are a, if you tell somebody, is my understanding of the law, if you tell somebody that you have a disability and that the service dog is trained to help you with that disability, then that's it. They have to, at that point, permit you to use the service dog in that particular, in whatever the context.
And also, about how the dog is trained to migrate their disability.
Right, yeah.
And also, that, that they can't demand any ID.
They can't demand proof, they can't demand cards or ID and so forth. And so, the law is very clear on that, and I think that, I'm not sure if it's the Department of Labor or Department of, one of the federal departments that administers ADA has a pretty good checklist, like you say, of what you can and cannot do. And so, maybe we, as a community, just need to do a better job of getting that word out. And so, we will, tonight's an opportunity to do that. We're educating, we're educating some people here tonight, but then also, maybe if you would hang around and maybe talk to some of the folks from the press, there might be some other ways that we can get the word out. Thank you. George, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had two questions, totally unrelated, but as far as my two questions. But first of all, does the city have any plans to partner with the Troup County Parks and Recs in regards to a field of dreams for the special needs kids that is in the dream stage? But I haven't heard any further developments on that. Are you aware of that initiative?
I am not aware of the current status, but I'm going to ask Chairman Cruz, if he would, to respond to that in a minute. The question was about the Field of Dreams project through Parks and Rec. As I think most people know, the Parks and Rec department is a department of the county, and the three cities basically contract, if you will, with the county to run the parks and recreation facilities countywide. And so, Chairman Cruz may have some more detail on that. You want to come forward?
That idea was brought forth by a local businessman here in town who had seen it in some other places. And I talked with him on several occasions, and we presented some property to him that the field could be bought on, but as with most things, there's a price tag with it. And I spoke to him last week, and he's still trying to get his plans formulated as to how he would do a fundraising campaign for that. But again, it's a project, it's his project that he's trying to move forth on, and he has taken some time. It's been a year or two since he first presented that idea.
Okay. So, it sounds like there is some movement, there is some activity, and I'll, Chairman, you'll follow up on that, of course, and see, yeah.
Just give me some advice when I'm talking to potential young professionals moving to the area where they hear about our gang problem. Tell me how I can talk positively about that.
That we're actually responding to it. Everybody's got it, most people ignore it, and we're actually responding to it. And I think that's the, you could, Chief Deckmar can show you, they've got gangs in Noonan, they've got gangs in Columbus, they've got gangs in Rome, they've got gangs in Macon, they've got gangs all over metro Atlanta. Our gangs are no worse, they're not much better. I mean, they're just, you know, basically, they're what they are. The difference is, we are actually acknowledging it and trying to do something about it, whereas most communities ignore it. And if you, and if you don't, if they don't accept that, Chief Deckmar can give you statistics and data to prove it, to demonstrate that, you know, that this is, that we are responding to it, and while these other communities sometimes just turn a blind eye to it. You know, other communities, some of which I've named, have had, have had a lot more killings and significant gang-related issues than we have. killings and, and significant gang-related issues than we have. But they don't have the leadership that we do at the police department, the sheriff's department, the district attorney's office to come forward and say, you know what, this is unacceptable and we're going to actually arrest folks and make cases. So as a result of that, I think we are, we are making significant progress in it. Chief, do you want to add to that?
If anybody has questions, I'll be here afterwards. I can share that with them.
Kind of along the same lines as that question, one of the big different areas that I see about LaGrange versus if I go to Noonan or some of the metro Atlanta areas is the amount of very, very low income housing there is in LaGrange. Structures that are about to cave in all over the place inside city limits. Is there any effort or any way to handle, you know, trying to get those, those areas redeveloped, partnering with?
There's a lot of work on that and there's been a lot of progress made on that. And, and I think that, you know, here again, statistically speaking, it's not, the anecdotal observation may not be accurate when you look at the statistic. Our problem is that some of the areas where we have concentrated areas of dilapidated housing tend to be along some of our main corridors. But, but every community has, has housing issues. Every community of our size, there's, there's, there's no community the size of LaGrange anywhere around Georgia that doesn't have large areas of dilapidated housing. In fact, one of the main issues that the Georgia Municipal Association is working on right now is blight and how cities might be able to use eminent domain to go in and take properties, to rehab properties. That's a whole discussion going on at the General Assembly. That LaGrange is really not, I mean, we're involved in that discussion. I'm involved in those discussions, but we're not the ones beating down the door saying we got to do something because we've actually had, we've actually made progress in LaGrange when most of the other communities around the state haven't been able to make the progress we have. Now, how have we made progress? We've made progress by implementing a policy that whenever a utility customer changes at a particular address, the city goes in and does an inspection to see if the property is up to code, up to standard, et cetera, before we'll turn the utilities back on for the new customer. That forces the, that forces the property owner to upgrade the property if they won't actually do anything with it. Okay? So I think the, I think the statistic was maybe 10 years ago, LaGrange had identified about 1,500 properties in the community that were substandard, dilapidated. I think, I think last year we were down to 600 or 700. So I mean, we've, still a lot too many and unfortunately they're caught, they're, they're concentrated. But, but other cities around Georgia look to us as a leader in actually figuring out a way to do something about this because they have, they have the same issues and haven't been able to figure out how to, how to improve it. So we've made progress, there's more work to do. One of our bigger prob, one of our biggest problems is owner-occupied housing. Because if it's landlord property, right, if it's a landlord, they're going to be changing tenants every couple of years. And so we're going to be able to go in and do an inspection and, and demand that they make some improvements and so forth. But if it's a owner-occupied property, someone who's lived there for 40 or 50 years, the utilities are still in the, you know, grandmother's name, et cetera. We really don't have any way to, to sort of force that hand. So that's sort of an identified issue. The General Assembly is looking at giving cities the authority to do a little bit more with eminent domain process. I'm, I'm hesitant to go there, quite honestly, because I don't like that model. But, but it's a, it's a, it's a struggle that people have all over. It's not unique to us. One of the, I mentioned the corridors and one of the things that we have identified is to say that we don't want dilapidated housing anywhere. Okay? We don't want substandard housing anywhere, but we certainly don't want it along our entry gateways. And so that's why the City Council commissioned a gateway corridor study to look particularly at White'sville, Hamilton, Lafayette and Greenville roads as the main corridors into town to try to see is there something we can do to identify how to improve, make improvements there. And I'm hopeful that, I'm hopeful that we'll move forward with some elements of that corridor plan, which may not eliminate all the substandard housing, but will at least help improve some of those gateways for, for the, for people who are observing when they're just traveling through town as opposed to drilling down into the statistics. Thank you for the question. Let me, let me come to Dr. Gore for a second. I'm, I'm having, my council members have all been very quiet, so I, I'm curious what.
Just to follow up on that question, if you could comment on the changes that are being made in the Housing Authority, which is a big, is a big project that they are undertaking.
Sure. The, under the leadership of Executive Director Zsa Zsa Hurd, the Housing Authority has been approved for what's called Rental Assistance Demonstration. It's a federal program that will allow them to, that will allow them to redevelop the housing projects to, to, to allow the residents to choose whether to take voucher potentially to go into a private setting or to stay in the, in the Housing Authority property. And, and in, and in doing so, they will be able to also rebuild and remodel both Lucy Morgan Homes and Benjamin Harvey Hill Homes. It will be great for their residents because it will improve the quality of their housing. It will also be good from the aesthetics of the city because you will be taking a 1950s model housing development, housing project development and, and rebuilding it as a, as a more 21st century apartment-style development. If you've been to Griffin recently, they've, they've done this in Griffin where, I think it's Williamson Road, maybe entrance into, into Griffin, where they, where they've rebuilt the, the housing, the housing development there that was similar, very similar to ours. And they've done it to make it look like a, a new, modern apartment development. And I think that's really helped to approve the, improve the aesthetics. And we're looking for, for the Housing, Housing Authority to do something similar at both Lucy Morgan and Benjamin Harvey Hill. Thank you, Dr. Gore. Kendall.
Yes. Everyone's always asking about when we're going to get more retail and we know that you have to have the more rooftops. So back to another question that could help us to potentially get more rooftops is has the City Council and the Council, the Commissioners and the school system with the whole team together discussed potentially lowering taxes for senior citizens? So if we could become more of a retirement community with us having the lake in the area, then perhaps we could get more retirees moving to the area because right now we have competing areas around us, counties around us that do not, they don't have the school tax for the retirees. I know that we need it right now. We could not, our schools could not exist if we went in and eliminated the, the property taxes being paid by our senior citizens. But if there was some way to look at, at some kind of reduction over time as we had an increase in rooftops, if we made a goal to be able to reduce it to where the retirees did not have to pay the school taxes.
Right. And I'll have to defer to the school board on that question. They set their millage rate, obviously, and they set the, the standard. I'm, I'm not sure if the exemption, if they set the exemption or if that has to be done by local legislation even, I'm not sure at the, at the, at the General Assembly. The city of LaGrange does not charge a property tax. I mean, our, our, we are, of the 500 cities in Georgia, you can count on probably one hand the number of cities that don't levy any millage rate. And LaGrange is one of them. We haven't levied a property tax millage in the city in 18 years, I think it is. Almost 20 years. We have not levied a millage rate, which is, which is a great thing. And you say, well, what does that really mean? Well, you know, Noonan levies four mills, Hogansville levels, levies nine mills. So I mean, most cities do levy a millage. So on top of the county and the school board, most cities charge an additional millage and we don't in LaGrange, which is, which is a good thing. And certainly a sales pitch, a sales pitch for people. But I also understand that the school and county do levy millages. And so I was, I was not going to put him on the spot, but he's raised his hand, so I am going to let the county commission chairman, come down front. I want someone to be in the spotlight with me, Mr. Chairman, and I can give you a, I can give you a.
I'm coming down the front.
And I'm going to take me a cough drop while you, while you, while you talk.
The lights are kind of bright down here. Kendall, let me say that when I was campaigning, that was, there were often questions about how do you reduce property tax for seniors? And so it is a very challenging question, to say the least. But just most recently, like two or three weeks ago, I was talking to the county manager to kind of get me some information about how many people over the age of, we started with 70 as an example, how many people over 70 in Trupe County pay property tax? And so he asked me, why are you looking at that? Why do you want to number? And it was to say, well, what if we gave a property tax decrease to that group of people? Well, and asking that question, he said, well, are you aware of the different programs and tax exemptions we have for seniors right now? And, and honestly, I did not. So let me say that right now in Trupe County that we give, it's a little over $1.2 million in tax breaks to seniors. There's several different categories at which you can apply for a tax break. So if you look at it, our entire budget for the county is about 39 million. And so a little over $1 million of that, we are remitting to, to seniors. Now again, let me say, that's for Trupe County, I mean, that's for property, not the school board. Those are things that a lot of it's been in, excuse me, can you say it? Been put in place by the state of Georgia. But I had asked one of the, the news media about two weeks ago if they would look at doing a story on it so that we could educate our citizens about those exemptions that already exist. So if you're, if you, if you're interested, if you'll contact me, then I can hook you up with Shane Frigley, no, excuse me, not Shane. If you'll contact me, I'll put you in touch with Todd Temple and we can get those programs that seniors should qualify for. And there was some talk about, I think, if I heard correctly, the tax commissioner is looking at going to some of the senior centers and making sure people are aware of those programs so they could apply for them.
Isn't it also by your income?
There is this income component to some of that. And then there's also some veteran status and some other special exemptions that are out there. Let me just follow up on that too and to say that part of where that question goes is, how do, how do we as a community conceptualize our attractiveness to potential residents? What, what's the story we want to tell? Are we a retirement destination? Are we a young professional destination? Are we a recreation destination? What, what is the vision? What is the big, broad vision of what we would want people to think? I mean, Alpharetta likes to say that they are the place for, for, you know, computer innovation and so forth. So I mean, they've attracted Microsoft and Google and companies like that and they try to become a place to attract young people. I've, I've had this conversation with the mayor of Alpharetta. That's why I'm thinking of them. But so, you know, they have a niche that they're going for to try and, to try and develop that, that attractiveness. Other communities have, I heard the mayor, I heard mine and Meg's good friend Boyd Austin the other day taught, who's mayor of Dallas, Georgia and president of the Georgia Municipal Association, quite straightforwardly say, we're a bedroom community. We know we're a bedroom community. That's what we are, that's what we want to be. We know people drive, live here and they drive into Atlanta to work and then they drive home. I don't think LaGrange wants to be a bedroom community. We've never been a bedroom community. We've always been a place where people drove here to work as opposed to living here and driving other, other places. And so, you know, we just have to think as a community through that question, what do we want to be? And what I'm hearing you say, Kendall, and I appreciate that, is that we ought to be more intentionally thinking about, do we want to be a senior destination? We have lots of reasons to say that. Hospital, lake, golf course, I mean, we have lots of things, proximity to the Atlanta Airport, we have a lot of, a lot of amenities to that. And I think that what I would like to do is to take, is to take that discussion to the Strategic Planning Board and to other groups and the chamber and say, as we start marketing the community, how do we, how do we, what, what are we trying to be as we try to grow and bring in rooftops? And you might say, well, we'll take all. And that's sort of, that's, the Methodist in me says that, right? I mean, the Methodist in me says, you know, we'll, we take everybody, right? I mean, it's, you know, open hearts, open minds, open doors. And I would, I would, you know, would, would say certainly that's right. But as we start focusing in on our marketing effort, we do kind of need to narrow that down a little bit and maybe have some more selected targets.
Just to note, we were selected out of 20,000 communities across the country as one of the top 10 in the United States in which to retire. We recently awarded that extinction.
That's right, that's right. I, I did, I did know, I'd forgotten about that. Yeah, thank you.
Telephone number.
My telephone number. 706.
You just, because my camera, so the camera will pick it up.
I didn't warn everybody.
Oh, oh.
706, I'm at door 23rd.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, well, let me, let me go to Bob and then I'll come, can I go to Facebook first since we, yeah, let me get a Facebook question.
I got three from Facebook.
Okay, well, let's do one.
They've been waiting. Well, somebody wants to know about when the sign ordinance is going to change.
The sign ordinance? It's currently under review by the Planning Commission to be updated. And I, I don't know that we have a timeframe yet on that.
Planning Board has recommended approval. I'm just going to be bringing it to you now. I'm making some final.
The, the, our current sign ordinance was written, I think, in the late 1990s?
I think it was 96.
96. So it's about 20 years old. Our current, our current sign order is about 20 years old. And, and it was in need of updating as, as best practices around the community have, around the state and so forth have, have, have changed. And so the Planning Commission has been working on that for about a year at, at possibly bringing a, a planned revision to the City Council. And so I anticipate hearing that in the next couple of months. Let me come to Bob.
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment I'd like to make.
Okay.
Question is related to the THRED, you know, I'm involved in. Be curious, related to this discussion about what we want to be and what vision we see, what you personally and leaders of the city see as the role that the THRED trail system could play in that attractiveness, attractiveness.
And the question's about the THRED proposed multi-use trail, which a, a group of citizens initiated, I guess about a year ago, came together and started talking about this. I see the THRED as being a, a great amenity for our community. I see it as being, at first I thought it was an attractor in that it was going to be something that would attract people to our community, that they would say, well, this is a great amenity and I'm, I'm drawn to it. I actually have, have, have come to the belief that it's not, it's no longer just an attractor, it's a requirement. Because this is something that is, is being done in other communities around, if we want to compete for residents against places like Carrollton, Noonan, Columbus, all of which are doing multi-use trails, we really don't have any choice but to do it. I personally think ours will be nicer than, than some of the others and particularly because of the way it'll weave through the community, taking, taking, in a number of existing parks and a number of existing neighborhoods. I think it'll be a great, a great amenity and something that will attract people of all ages. I recently had the opportunity to have dinner at a restaurant on the Atlanta Belt Line. And sitting out there, this was in, I guess it was in August of last year, maybe, maybe August, it was still kind of, it was still really warm. But we were sitting out on a little patio area, a group of us, right beside the Atlanta Belt Line around 6:30 or so. And I mean, it was just non-stop activity along the Belt Line and it was all ages, all races, all genders. I mean, it was, it was, there were, there were senior citizens, there were families with young children, there were people walking dogs. I mean, it was a, there was just every, every form of humanity that you could see was there. And a couple of months later, I had the opportunity to go at a lunch, lunchtime frame to Carrollton, to the Carrollton Greenbelt. And similarly, I mean, you had joggers, you had cyclists, you had just people out at, at noon on a, on a week, on a weekday, out taking exercise and enjoying the great outdoors and so forth. So I mean, I think, I think these are things that are definitely used, they're definitely attractive to lots and lots of people of all demographics and I think that it will be here as well. What really sold me on this idea though, Bob, that it was no longer just an amenity, but it was a requirement, was when I had a conversation with the mayor of Noonan a couple of months ago and he said to me, he said, uh, he said, well, yeah, we're. of months ago, and he said to me, he said, he said, well, yeah, we, we're meeting next week, we're going to hire the PATH Foundation and get them to design a trail for us. And I said, I said, really? And he said, yeah. He said, well, you know, I knew Carrollton had done it, and now y'all have done it, so I, I, I got to do this, too. I can't get left behind, you know? And so it, it's because he recognizes that in Noonan, that if they don't have these types of amenities, they can't compete for new residents and, and so forth, who are attracted to those, to those things. So I think it's a great project, a great program. I anticipate that, can I, can I say this, Mr. Chairman? I anticipate that the county will probably be calling for a potential renewal of the SPOST, the 1-cent sales tax SPOST. That will be expiring the end of 2018, and the county's going to be calling for a renewal of that, of that SPOST. And, and certainly, I hope that the citizens of Truitt County will support the renewal. It's not a new tax, it's just a continuation of the existing SPOST. But when they go about, when they go about calling for that renewal of the SPOST, I'm hopeful that there will be significant funding in there for the Thread, because I think that's probably how we're actually going to make this happen, is through a combination of private sponsorships, private foundations, as well as some public support in the form of SPOST. I'm very excited about the prospect.
Yeah, and one comment, please, if you may. I've been in LaGrange for 30 years. Unfortunately, I was not in LaGrange last Thursday night, but I did have the opportunity Saturday morning to watch the live feed of the event at...
Lord's Chapel Church.
And I must say personally myself, it was the most moving, inspiring, hopeful, uniting, joyous event that I've seen in my 30 years in LaGrange. And I could not comment, a compliment, Chief Deckmar, yourself, the other officials, and the other participants who played a role in that. I think it was absolutely spectacular. And one more comment, my three grown daughters who live, two in Atlanta and one in France, have all watched portions of that and were equally moved and, and inspired by, by what has happened here. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bob. And thank you, Chief, for your leadership in that, in that event.
Okay. Heather Page from Facebook Lives wants to know, what is going on, what is going where Ryans used to be?
What is going where Ryans? The question is, what is going where Ryans used to be at the mall? The answer to that is, the answer to that is that I believe there are going to be several restaurants locate, own the mall property there in the area where Ryans and, and to the, I guess that's to the west of there along an arc. And I am, but I, I am unable to disclose any particular names or restaurant identity because there are no leases signed, to my knowledge. And my rule is, my rule is, I never want to, I never want to overpromise something, I never want to, to, to talk about something that may or may not happen, et cetera. And, and I didn't do that with Hobby Lobby and with Dunham's until leases were actually signed and the mall was in a position to be able to say, yes, these things are coming, here's the signed document. And so until we have signed leases on any of those particular things that are, that are in the works, I can't, I can't identify any particular names. But I can tell you that the whole group who owns the mall is very excited about the prospects for the mall. They think that with Hobby Lobby and Dunham's coming as two new big anchor tenants, that they will have a lot of more announcements of smaller retailers and restaurants over the next few months, and I, and I'm, I'm very confident that will happen. Have one more question on Facebook, or?
Yes. Liz Begian wants to know, what is being done to get young people back home?
A lot of the things we've talked about are, are being done. Certainly the jobs, because at the end of the day, we have to have jobs for young people. And so as we, as we grow our jobs, as we diversify the job base, as we work on things like the Thread, as we work on things like Sweetland Amphitheater, the, the brewery downtown, as we work on these quality of life amenities, we're making LaGrange not only a place where you can work, but also a place where you would want to live. And so I think that we, we continue to fight that, we continue to fight that battle, as does every, as does every city around, particularly non-metro cities. We know that there's just always going to be a big draw of Atlanta from, for young people, but I had somebody, I spoke to the Lions Club the other day, and, and they said that if anyone ever tells you LaGrange isn't a great place to live, they've never lived anywhere else. And I think there is some, some aspect of that, that a lot of people, a lot of people go away thinking that maybe the grass is greener, et cetera, and then they come back here eventually saying that, you know, LaGrange is a pretty good town and, and has a lot of things going for it. And I think we're really, we're really starting through some of these initiatives, we're really starting to offer proof in the form of jobs and amenities that this is a place where you, where you would want to return. And quite honestly, some of the work that Chief Deckmar and others have done on the Race Relations Initiative is, is also part of that, because, you know, young, young people see that LaGrange is a place that actually embraces its diversity, embraces the fact that it has black, white, Korean, or Asian, Latino, has lots of different, has lots of different diversity to it. Hope some of you maybe were able to attend the International Festival on the Square that, that Page and, and the Life Committee put together last fall, and to see just how diverse a community we are. And, and I think that that's something that young people in particular, but everybody in general, would, would find attractive, and certainly something that I think we continue to embrace.
We have a Young Professionals Group that has a kickoff Thursday evening at the Fields and...
Come, Paige, come down here so we can see you over on the camera. Come down here so we can see you. You've, you've been talking from back in the back, and, and I just can't say enough good things about Paige Estes and the work that she does at the LaGrange-Truitt County Chamber of Commerce. When, when there's something that we need in our community and it doesn't really fit any of the normal boxes or any of the normal job descriptions or any of the normal roles, first person I think of is Paige, and I say, Paige, you can handle this, can't you? And you always say, yes.
I think I do all other duties at the time. But for anyone in Facebook Live or anyone here, we do have a Young Professionals Group that's part of the Chamber. Anyone is welcome to participate. We say ages 23 to 45 are young at heart, but we have a kickoff Thursday evening at the Fields Golf Course. It's going to be great, fun, it's free. You can go to the Chamber's website, thegrangechamber.com, click on my calendar, you can register to attend. I know we are even 40 young professionals signed up. We hope that we can get many more votes, but I think it's going to be a great opportunity, and it's all walks of life, from folks that work in offices to folks in construction, people that own their own businesses, they're all alone. Thanks, Mrs.
Thank you, Paige, thank you. Well, thank y'all again for coming out. I have, I've thoroughly enjoyed the discussion. We've covered a lot of different topics, which is, which is nice to not, to, to, to cover, to cover a lot of things that the city's involved with. I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve as your mayor. I have, I have enjoyed this role. I think that we have a lot of good and exciting things happening in LaGrange. I'm particularly grateful that I get to work with, with three, with six, and three here tonight, six great City Council members who, who truly represent what they believe to be in the best interest of the city of LaGrange. I mean, they do a fabulous job of studying issues, thinking through proposals, and trying to do, trying to not, trying to not just count heads in the room and see which way the political wind blows, but actually saying, this is what is best for our community and this is what, what we need to embrace. And I'm glad that three of the six were able to be with us tonight, and I'm also grateful, obviously, to work with a fabulous staff. But, but I would like to see if any of the three City Council members would like to come forward and, and make any comment. I'm not going to insist upon it, I'm not, I'm not, I can't insist upon it, but if y'all are, if y'all are, if y'all are interested in, in adding anything to anything that's been said tonight, I'd certainly give you, welcome that opportunity.
Unanimous that none of us wanted to come up.
Okay. You know, the great thing about the LaGrange City Council is that we don't always agree initially when a, a topic comes up. We all always have a, a particular reaction, as anybody would, and, but we don't vote immediately. Instead, we always step back and, and talk about it, and think about it, and discuss it amongst ourselves and among our, our residents, and, and reflect upon it and see if there's, if there's, what is the best solution here? And, and because of that approach, we're almost always unanimous. I mean, if you take, I mean, if you, if you come to a City Council meeting, you may get bored because there's not a lot of debate or discussion. It's not because the discussion hasn't taken place, people haven't been thinking about it, but it's because they've, they've been reflecting upon it, they've been talking it up at their churches, they've been talking to civic groups, they've been talking to their colleagues, trying to figure out, you know, what is the best approach here. And then we all come together, and I think there is tremendous goodwill and trust among the seven of us, the mayor and the six council members. And I appreciate, I appreciate all three of you who are here tonight, as well as our other council members who weren't able to join us. And certainly, if you have any specific questions, we've got our police chief here, we've got our city manager, assistant city manager, city planner, we've got Sergeant McCoy, who is our community outreach officer, we've got a lot of staff in the, in the, in the room if you have a specific question afterwards that you might want to, that you might want to, to bring forward. So if it's okay with, with our cameraman and, and Facebook team, I'll, I'll end, end the formal part of the town hall there and say once again, thank y'all very much for coming out tonight and for your time and attention.